Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Independence City Council for Monday, March 1st, 2021. Our invocation this evening will be offered by Tim Allison, Chaplain and Breavement Coordinator of Visiting Nurses Association. Tim?
Dear God, we thank you once again for the blessing of another day, for the blessing that you have given us to be able to lead a fine city and to be a part of the leadership of this city. We pray that you would give us a wisdom, a guidance, a grace, and most of all, a demeanor that befits the greatness of our city. You call us to lead and we pray that we would live up to the high standard of that calling. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Go ahead.
Okay, we did have one citi-- oh, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Steinmeier? Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Here.
Here. We did have one citizen who requested to speak to the council tonight. I'm sorry. Joyce Constance White requested to speak to the council on the public hearing. So Joyce, if you're here, did you want to address the council now or do you just want to speak during the public hearing?
Whatever's good for you.
Okay, listen.
Yes?
Hold on just a second. I'm sorry. Let me--
I'm happy to do it now. It's short.
Okay, that's fine. Have you listed our citizen requests? So if you'd like to go ahead, well, you can do that now. We'll consider it as part of the public hearing.
Okay, just very quickly, Joyce Constance White, Independence, Missouri. I appreciate you guys listening and hearing me this evening. My main concern was with the new business that is going in at 11805 East 23rd Street, which is actually very near to our neighborhood. This is going to be, I understand, a convenience store, which will provide not just the convenience of food items, but also gasoline. And they have applied for a liquor license. So my main concerns, actually first off, we're pleased there's a new business going in. So that's wonderful for our area of 23rd Street. So that will look very nice. The building looks great. They've been working very hard on that. So that will be a plus for our neighborhood. Main concerns are the density of liquor licenses, businesses that are within a half mile between Chrisler and just a little bit west of Sterling Avenue. So within this density area, we already have seven businesses that are selling liquor. So seems like quite a lit-- quite a lot within a density that is not that big. In regards to that, also the concern of the trash that over the past few years has also picked up within the area of 23rd and within our neighborhoods. So plastic bags, lots of beer cans, lots of liquor bottles in respect of that. It's very evident and that's just another big concern in regards to that. My biggest request is just if the council would take into consideration the density area of number of liquor licenses in regards to the area of how many liquor licenses are exist within a small density area. So that is my concern. I appreciate you guys allowing me to be here this evening and speak before you. And I hope that you will take those items into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council this evening? Okay, Madam City Clerk, is there anybody else who signed up in advance?
Yeah, I have Dick Bryant. He requests to speak to the council regarding liquor applications and non-ordinance action item number five.
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Mayor, thank you. It might make more sense for me to speak on these when we get to the public hearing issue as the man meet, just to simplify things. Although, and I didn't sign up for it, but as I was reviewing things tonight, did note there was probably a small issue with respect to proposed council action with respect to amendment of liquor fees. Not my dog, but I did pass a message on to Tom just a couple of minutes ago suggesting that there was one license fee that I saw that was a problem. And I'm happy to visit with you about that if you want as well, but it's not my agenda item. I'm here for the public hearing one.
Okay, so you don't need to sign up to speak as a full public hearing. So we'll just call for you when we get to that part of the agenda.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council this morning? This morning, this evening? Okay, then we will move on to our proclamation of the COVID-19 Memorial Day. Madam City Clerk?
Excuse me. Whereas COVID-19 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, observance of public health orders to social distance and stay at home have created challenges for small businesses, workers, and schools, which are working to comply with limited resources. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has been a-- has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. Whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown. And whereas more than 2.5 million people worldwide and 500,000 people in the United States have lost their lives due to COVID-19, and in Missouri alone, more than 8,000 lives have been lost to this deadly virus. And whereas each life lost, excuse me, to COVID-19 mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and surrounding communities. Now therefore, I lean and we, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, designates the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in remembrance of those who have lost their lives and in honor of those who continue to suffer from the impact of this virus, and call upon the people of Independence to continue taking preventative measures, such as social distancing and following public health orders to mitigate spread of this virus in tribute to essential workers and those who rose in service to protect the public.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Very somber moment remembering those across our city, our region, our nation, and the world who have lost their lives of COVID-19. And I think although we're very enthusiastic about the vaccines and the beautiful weather that we've been having in spring on the horizon, I think it's very appropriate that we take a moment and remember that we are still in the middle of a very, very serious public health threat. So I appreciate the opportunity to join with many, many communities across our nation in memorializing this day and the first Monday in March as the COVID-19 Memorial Day. This takes us to our consent agenda. Mayor, pro temp.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded, are there any items any council member wishes pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. This brings us to our public hearing. This is a public hearing for the application received from Manmeet Enterprises LLC, doing business as Truman Mart I for an unlimited retailer of intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales, located at 11805 East 23rd Street. This is a full public hearing. Mr. Scannell?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Scannell. I'm the Community Development Director. So this liquor license application or this address was approved for a liquor license back in 2018. At that time, the convenience store started construction. Their intent was to have the store completed. Unfortunately, they ran into some construction issues. They renewed their liquor license in 2019 as construction progressed on the building. Unfortunately, in 2020, when the renewal came around, they did not renew their license, even though construction progressed on this facility. So with that 2020 renewal not taking place, this is a-- this is considered a new application. So it's essentially the same liquor license that was approved in 2018. Just to give a little bit of background, so Truman Mart is going to operate a 4,600 square foot building there. Their plans are to sell unlimited packaged liquor. And this application meets the liquor license criteria. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scannell. I have a question, and maybe this was just misprinted in the tentative agenda. It says under the-- that it requires vote for approval due to residential property being located within 300 feet. Does this require two-thirds majority vote, Madam City Clerk?
Yeah, I think that's what it's indicating. I defer to Tom.
Yes, it does require two-thirds majority vote because of the proximity to residential.
There's just a phrase missing on my agenda, but maybe it was on the final agenda. Okay, so Mr. Bryant is here. He's already indicated that he would like to speak at this public hearing. So Mr. Bryant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I am Dick Bryant. I'm an attorney. They represented the original license applicants back in March of 2018. Historically, we met with Tom and his group in the late part of 2017, early 2018, discussing the plans that were involved. At the council meeting on March 5th, 2018, representatives of Carter Energy, Phillips Petroleum, the architect, the owner of the property, and I made a presentation to the council concerning this location. Those of you who were on the council at the time might remember that we had letters of recommendation included in the packet that came from other jurisdictions where the operators were found, recommending the operational skills and the compliance of the operator. Like everything during the last few years, construction delays, supply delays, COVID delays made things much worse for this development than anyone had anticipated. And it's not unique to this location. A number of the gas stations that are being built throughout the city went from what should have been two-year projects at the most to three- and four-year projects. Earlier this year, the accountant for the entity suggested that it would be advantageous to have the company owned by the wife of the current owner. I don't know, I didn't discuss with them the implications behind it. I would suspect it has some things to do with WBE and MBE businesses, but I didn't explore that. And so the application really is meant solely as a transfer from the old husband to the wife, and it's nothing more. The landlord remains the same. The manager of the business will remain the same. The only thing that really changes is the owner of the company. Tom referenced the licenses. The business licenses have been paid every year, 2018, 19, 20, and 21, even though the business has not been open for business. There's no front door. The fees have been paid to the city all along. The liquor license fees have been paid for 2018, 19, and 20, and in fact, have been paid for 2021. I do have the 2021 liquor license as well that was issued by the city for the current operator. So in many respects, what we're really asking you to do is approve the transfer from the husband to the wife so that hopefully, in the next 60, 90, or 120 days, they could become operational. With respect to the comment that was made during the public hearing, I would probably suggest a couple, quite frankly. First, you have letters of recommendation in the original file saying that they're good operators. The second thing we should do is, quite frankly, my clients will be more than happy to visit with Ms. Constance White or the Neighborhood Association and provide phone numbers and information to be a good neighbor and enter into a good neighbor agreement with them. You know, the store's not open, so the liquor that's being complained of isn't coming from this store. But the stores that have been operational by this client have been always clean. There have never been violations. And there have not been any code issues in any of the jurisdictions they operate. So that's the background of it. I'm hopeful that you'll approve the transfer from husband to wife, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bryant. Are there-- is there anybody present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Okay, this public hearing is closed? Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Councilman Huff?
Are you going to the council?
I'll close the public hearing and then we can read the item and we can have a discussion.
Okay.
So I will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Council action is requested regarding the application received from Manmeet Enterprises LLC, doing business as Truman Mart I for an unlimited retailer of intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales, located at 11805 East 23rd Street South.
Okay, Councilman Huff?
Yeah, I have a little concern about this hearing since this has been approved. Mr. Bryant provided that documentation. I don't understand why we have to have two-thirds when it's already been approved other than a transfer of ownership here. I don't even know why we're even in this situation here. If they've been-- if it was passed then and then fees have been paid and everything's taken care of, I don't-- I'm kind of lost on why we have an application on this one. Can the city manager or Mr. Scannell tell me why this is on here like this?
Mr. Speaker?
I'll need to ask Tom to weigh in on that one, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scannell?
Yes, so this liquor license application, as I mentioned, was approved in 2018. They renewed it again in 2019. When 2020 renewal came around, the liquor license was not renewed. And so if it's-- if the liquor license application is not renewed by June 30th of 2020, then the license is considered null and void, and a new application has to be considered, which is what we have here before us, is that new application. And as part of the new application, they are tran-- they want to transfer-- they want to have the ownership under the wife's name instead of the husband's name.
So the virus and all the stuff we've been going through since March had no play in this whatsoever, is what you're saying? It's just a lack of paying the fees? Is that what you're trying to say to me, Tom?
Yes, and the construction of the building was slowed down, as Mr. Bryant said, through construction delays. And it had some impact regard to COVID. But as far as this license goes, it is just the missing that renewal by June 30th of 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on this item? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. This takes us to our non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 21-725, a resolution amending section six ordinances, resolutions, and motions of the council rules of procedure.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Briefly, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
For the folks out there that haven't read it or watched it, I propose this to make a-- change the rule just a little bit, that anything submitted by a council member has to be submitted to the city clerk's office by noon on the Wednesday before the meeting. I think it's a little bit of human nature that folks end up putting stuff off till the last minute on deadlines. I know I do. And, you know, I really want citizens and council members and staff to have-- and I'm sure the rest of us do, want to have enough time to consider things that we're going to vote on before we-- plenty of working day time to consider them, so that's why I proposed it.
Thank you. Councilman Hobart, I agree with you that we've had some council agendas that, you know, don't really get out in time for people to have adequate opportunity to really learn and study what's on them, and we tend to have very robust agendas. I had sent an email to the council regarding this, asking if we could come to an agreement to have things in by noon on Thursday. The city manager has a staff meeting typically on Thursday mornings, and these are things that might be able to be presented to the staff for approval on Thursday. I did not receive any response. Other-- I did receive a response from Councilmember DeLucy, who agreed that we needed to get our agendas finalized sooner, and Councilman Stewart. I had asked if the council wanted to have a study session on this, and nobody indicated that that-- that felt that was necessary, and that's totally fine. We-- I would ask maybe for consideration of a little bit of flexibility on the Wednesday. It's-- Mondays are awful busy, filled up with preparing for the council meeting. So that really only gives us one-- would only give us one day if we wanted to prepare something for the following week. And of course, throughout the year, we have, you know, a handful of Monday holidays that would also be maybe a time crunch to try to get things in on Wednesday. So I wholeheartedly support having a deadline that we should all be held to. But would it be-- I would ask for consideration from you if you would consider amending that to sometime on Thursday. I mean, it could be Thursday noon, Thursday 9:00 a.m. I mean, but Wednesday at noon really doesn't provide very much time for people to prepare things for the following Monday agenda.
You know, I-- my-- I thought a lot about that, too. And my general thought is if you don't get it done, then it just has to wait. But I understand that's a little bit draconian. If, if, you know, if it's got some support among the council, then-- then I would, you know, we could amend it to-- I wouldn't want to go past noon on Thursday because I'd like, I'd like people to have at least, you know, you get a little time to look at it on Thursday, and at least you can make phone calls and stuff on Friday, so.
So is there any-- I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is there any other comment or input from the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Scott?
Could we consider maybe pulling it and just delaying this for about maybe a week just to get more input? I don't have a problem with the Thursday, but I can tell you, having the last couple resolutions that I've put together, it puts a-- when there's several council people or if we are co-sponsoring a resolution, it puts some pressure on our city staff, and sometimes they get a little backed up. I know that we've had times where it's come right down to the wire. And I'm-- I would just like to have-- I wish our city manager was here tonight to kind of give us some input to it. I would like to have him give us some input into this. I don't-- we all work different jobs, so sometimes, you know, it takes a lot of time on our part to make sure that the research is done well, that the wording is correct, to get input from city staff as well as other council people who are sharing it. Is there any way we could maybe pull this and get-- until Zack gets back maybe and have him give us some input, make sure we're not putting added pressure on the city staff?
I spoke with Zack about it before this was prepared and during the preparation of it, so he was fine with Wednesday. I initially had it as Monday, which he was not fine with, so.
Well, having, you know, I mean, it just, it puts a lot of pressure sometimes on-- on the re-reads, the rewrites, and the staff. They serve seven of us, so I want to make sure that they're-- because like I said, I've had resolutions. When you prepare them, sometimes they go to the final hour. So I just want to make sure that we're not jamming up our city staff unnecessarily. And I'd like to hear him agree to that as well.
I appreciate that, but on the flip side, the-- what this gets you is more notice to everybody. And so if it can't get done by Wednesday or if we amend it to Thursday, then it just gets on the next council agenda. I mean, that's not a dire circumstance. We're not, you know-- there's no issue, you know, I just really think it serves the public much, much better. And it serves us much better, too.
Okay, well, I don't disagree in part. I do disagree that sometimes the pressure's put on us. But I-- and I don't want that pressure to be felt by the citizens, so that's fine.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember DeLucy?
I was just going to remark that if the city manager meets with the department heads every Thursday morning at 9:00, that should be our deadline, because beyond telling the citizens what's on our agenda, the city staff has to look at it and see how it's affecting everything else. So, Mr. Hobart, if you don't mind, I'd like to amend your motion to Thursday at 9:00 from Wednesday at noon.
Then I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So amend it from Wednesday at noon till Thursday at 9:00. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Huff?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Is there any further discussion on the item? Is there a further discussion on the item as amended? I would just say, in our business, you know, the expect the unexpected, and there may be occasion when that deadline is not for some reason able to be strictly met, so we will work with the city manager and certainly our city clerk, who is the one who prepares the agenda, if unusual circumstances come up that would require something, some flexibility with that deadline. So, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Huff?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. Non-ordinance action item number two.
Council action is requested regarding the change of ownership application received from Jam and Neil Express LLC to transfer an unlimited intoxicating liquor in the original package with Sunday sales license located at 17601 East 32nd Street South.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. Item number three.
Council action is requested to approve a contract with the Independence Chamber of Commerce for the license of the Independence Square Public Area for the Santa Calagon Festival from September 3, 2021 through September 6, 2021.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Mr. City Manager, I just have a question on this, and I don't know if anybody is here this evening from the Chamber of Commerce. They may have, it might be better addressed to them, but I'll let you determine that. My question is, when does this, this is, this is typical, this is what we've done for the last several years in our agreement with the chamber. There's not anything that has materially changed in this agreement, nor has the $12,000 that the city contributes increased, so I'm not concerned about that aspect of it. Can you tell me when the payment is typically made to the chamber in, for this contract? Is that done in advance of the event, after the the terms of the contract have been completed? Can you, can you speak to that?
Sure, and when you were talking, I think, I think we do have a representative from the chamber, I think Mr. Lesnick is.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's hard to see.
Yeah, it is, so I don't know if he wants to speak to that.
Yeah, can you just walk us through that, Tom? Because some of these council members have not been here for Santa Calagon, on the council for Santa Calagon, so just tell us mechanically kind of how that works.
Sure, on the payment side, I believe it, they always ask us to wait until after the start of the city's new budget year on July 1st. That payment is usually made prior to the festival, but it's usually probably invoiced in July, payment usually within a couple of weeks after that, but it does occur before the festival.
My, obviously what's on my mind, or maybe is, is what if the festival doesn't happen? I mean, we approved this this evening, not knowing what is going to be happening in September. I mean, I, you know, we all are very hopeful that this festival will occur in its usual fashion or close to its usual fashion. But if, is there anything in the contract that would say if the festival doesn't happen, then our, then the contract is, you know, null and void, or if it doesn't happen in the way that's outlined in the contract? The chamber, I mean, at this point, the chamber would be required to submit a, a request to have the festival based on our COVID protocols. I mean, that is very likely to maybe change before the summertime or certainly by Labor Day weekend, but I'm just trying to understand what if the festival doesn't happen or doesn't happen in the way that's laid out in the contract.
And Mayor, I think I can address that. Obviously, if we can't fulfill the contract, then that payment would be null and void. We wouldn't request the payment. I think by the time we make requests for the payment, we'll have a pretty good idea whether or not we can actually hold the festival. As of right now, we're planning as if, as if we are going to hold the festival. We are looking at safety protocols we can put in place, regardless really of, I think we're still in a situation where we'll have to encourage mask wearing. I think it's probably the prudent thing to do. We're looking at other festivals around the country that are being held prior to ours, to understand what challenges they face, to make sure that we're fully prepared, to make sure that it's a safe but also fun environment for our attendees.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. Item number four.
Council action is requested to amend the liquor license fees contained in the schedule of fees.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. Item number five.
Council action is requested regarding the change of ownership application received from Prime 3 LLC to transfer an unlimited intoxicating liquor in the original package with Sunday sales license located at 3459 South Sterling Avenue.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item number five passes. Item number six.
Sorry. Council action is requested regarding PUAB recommendations of IPL priorities.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember DeLucy?
This is more a management document, and I don't think the PUAB should be managing IPL, looking at the charter. I mean, they have like a bird's eye view. This talks about developing financial procedures and policies, comparing salaries and benefits with IBW employees. I mean, this is, this is management of IP and IPL, and that's not what the PUAB should be doing. Therefore, I'm not in favor of this item.
Mr. City Manager, we're fortunate that you're here tonight since you staffed the PUAB, so I'm hopeful that you and Mr. Nail can shed some light on this. I'm, I'm a little uncertain about what action is being requested by this item. I have concerns about some things that are in the document, and they are primarily things, you know, there's, there's a combination of sort of goals and tactics, and it's a little bit of a mixed bag. I know this document's been in development for quite some time, and I feel that many of these things are completed or underway, and it doesn't really outline how they're going to be measured, what type of reporting is going to be expected to keep the PUAB informed about the progress on some of these items. I do think some of them certainly cross the line into operation with should PUAB is not responsible for, and certainly contract negotiations. So I have a number of concerns about it as presented. The memo that we received on October 5th of last year, my understanding, which was what we had done in January of 2020, was that the PUAB would develop a set of priorities, and then that that would be presented to the council, and then the council would be, would give some feedback and develop our priorities, and then those would be put together into a final draft document for both bodies to accept. So if this is the PUAB's recommendation for the council to say, okay, we accept your recommendations and we will provide our feedback on it, then I don't have any problem of accepting it, but if it's, this is to be considered a final draft of what the council is going to agree to pursue on, per the recommendation of the PUAB, then I, then I am not going to support it. There, I, I feel that it needs further discussion. So can you clarify for me, they, the agenda item simply says council action is requested, and I'm not clear what action is being expected from the PUAB?
Sure, and I apologize for some of the lack of clarity in the language in the, in the action section. The PUAB spent several months working on this list of priorities, and this, I want to be, and they would want me to be clear, this is, this is their list of priorities. This is not a staff list of priorities. I think their hope, I believe, would be that the council would, they recommended that this be moved forward for the, to the council for, for adoption. So if that is not going to be the case, I think perhaps feedback from the council, and then we could take that feedback back to the board and continue to work with them on refining some of these items and working on developing something that would be acceptable to, for everyone involved.
Okay, and Mr. Nail, is that your understanding as well as there? This is being brought forward for the council to adopt and proceed with these priorities as outlined?
Yes, Mayor, that's my understanding of what the PUAB intended with this list.
In that case, then, I have given some individual feedback to Mr. Norris, Mr. Walker, as this document's been in development, and that has, it's not reflected in this, in what we're seeing this evening, and I think we're really on the right track. There's a lot of good, good direction in here and recommendations, but I, I feel that we need to give the opportunity to the council to respond to these things, and I would like to see it formatted in such a way where we know how these, how these things are going to be measured, just as we do with our strategic plan for the city.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, I was just going to say, how about I move to table this until after the next PUAB meeting, and so that, I'm sure that Mr. Norris and Mr. Nail know what we're talking about here. We need a little more verbiage there to see it exactly. I'm with you, I don't think that we should be pinned down to these. I'd just like to see if they're making recommendations, or if this is the way they, this is what they're telling, or asking us to do, they can't tell us what to do, of course, but I move that we postpone this until the next PUAB meeting for some more clarification.
When is next, it's been moved and seconded, and when's the next PUAB, it's the third Thursday of the month? Is that correct? Okay. So maybe we can bring this back for the study session on March 22nd, and then the council has an opportunity to review it further and provide feedback as was outlined in the October 5, 2020 memo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would just briefly like to say that I do appreciate, somebody's put a lot of time and effort into this document, so I appreciate the effort that's gone into it, and you can tell by reading it where the PUAB is certainly thinks there can be improvement in IPL, and there's, there's probably some in there that's spot on. I agree with you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember DeLucy, that, and Councilmember Huff, that it, it's a little bit, it needs some work, I would say for sure. I would, if the PUAB, I'm not saying they look for guidance from me, but if, if they were, I would suggest working with city staff and/or their council, IPL's council, Sarah Karnes, and sort of really focusing down some of these items. The last thing I'd like to see is for this to get longer, more bullet points added. I, it really, to be understandable and effective, needs to really be fairly closely tailored to, you know, something an advisory board would do. They're not necessarily supposed to take our, you know, 30,000-foot view, I don't think, but they certainly might want to get a little bit higher than the general manager's office. I think that might be a little more helpful to us. So anyway, those are my two cents, but I'm fine with giving them a chance to look at it and giving us another chance at a study session, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Steinmeier?
I just want to, just say that, that the, the original priority list was very long and many, many bullet points. So they've worked very hard in trying to scale it down, and I think that this is a pretty, pretty decent starting point, and I think it would service well to have some more discussion at a study session and then, and then bring it back. But to go from, I think there was 45 bullet points, it was just crazy long, to get it down to this, they, they have put in a lot of thought and discussion to get it to this point, but I, I have no problem taking it and discussing it further.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, then, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to postpone until March 22nd study session?
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, this brings us to our ordinances this evening. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 21-007, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements and general utility easements for the Bristol Drainage Improvements Project, project number 70131902, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number 21-008, an ordinance repealing Bill number 21-008, An Ordinance Repealing Chapter Two, Alcoholic Beverages and Adding a New Chapter Two, Alcoholic Beverages to the City Code. Second and final reading.
Is there discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hough.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Delucey.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordinance passes. Uh, we have one first reading this evening and one appropriation ordinance. Madam City Clerk.
21-009, An Ordinance Authorizing a Contract with Community Capital Fund for the Administration of a Small Business Assistance Program for Small Businesses Recovery Utilizing Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-CB Funds in Amount Not to Exceed $125,000. Bill number 21-502, An Ordinance Adopting an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 Budget, which is approved by Ordinance Number 19131. Bill number 21-502, An Ordinance Adopting Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 Budget, which is approved by Ordinance Number 19131. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hough.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Delucey.
No.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
No.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordinance passes. Alrighty, this, uh, I'll draw your attention as always to our COVID-19 semi, semi monthly update that our acting health director provides for us on a regular basis. Councilmember comments, I will start with Councilmember Stewart.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Perkins.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Huff. Nothing?
Nothing this evening, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember DeLuci.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Steinmeier.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Hobart.
I'm gonna, uh, share very quickly, uh, a secret, uh, that I learned from another, uh, council member. If folks out there are looking to sign up and get the, their vaccinations and they're having a hard time around Jackson County, uh, check out Bothwell Hospital. It's in Sedalia. They are giving vaccinations at the fairgrounds and, um, my parents and I know now a handful of people that have signed up and gotten in within one week. So if you're, um, of the, uh, at least in the first group, uh, you can get in and get vaccinated fairly quickly. So take a look if you're interested or having a hard time.
Thank you. Um, we are, just concluded Black History Month in February. We took a different approach this year and we collected a number of interviews and videos and essays from various citizens and other sources talking about Black History Month and independence and what it means to them. And I think it was very well received and, um, I want to thank our PIO and her staff, uh, Steve Wagner and, um, Zach McNulty for assisting with that. And there's still, I think, a few more trickling in, so we'll go, we'll be sure to share those as well. Uh, March is Women's History Month, so we will be doing something similar is collecting stories and interviews and essays, um, reflecting women's history and independence. So be looking for that. That's all I have this evening. Mr. City Manager, is there anything else this evening?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, then we are adjourned.